So people do park there and then write down. So that is potentially part of why.
But they're putting parking at Tryon, right?
Of transit.
Yes.
Transit area.
It'll be a transit area there with a few parking spots in front there.
But if you were into like a biking trailhead, you could theoretically like park up off the road. There's a whole pullout, actually there's a pullout on both sides of Bellisito, on both sides, right where Salty Park is. And then the other thing to keep in mind though is, and I don't know when that conversation was had because I know that skating is an issue, has been an issue on Bellisito Road, but when we just did our speed survey, that was one of the questions that I had for Erin is that, you know, the speed survey is done based on the current uses, right? So if you added a Class 1 trail right next to the road, that would then change the elements of the speed survey, which could potentially lower the speed again.
It could affect driver behavior and slow it down a little bit. But the other thing I'll just mention though is that, you know, again, the environmental is looking at all three call it segments. From that environmental though, we could look at segmenting the project though. And so you don't necessarily have to build this segment from Kirk to Tryon necessarily with the first phase of the project. If we, if this part felt like there's still some questions, you could always look at building from the transit stop at Tryon just down to the downtown quarter. Or as kind of your first one you're going to look at going after funding on and then prioritize this, maybe put some additional thought into, if this council has a different correction on maybe what to do across this section or we want more public input on that.
And like the least expensive portion of the segments is the third one in Inigant. But the problem is that's so not visible. And so, you know, if we want utilization of it, we want to try to drive, you know, visitors to that. It's hidden if you're starting that. As opposed to if you at least start either at Salty or if you start at a transit, it's quite visible where we can point people there.
So this project ends at Greenhorn.
For this, for what we're studying right now for this environmental purpose, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I got one more question, Matt. So as you're going down Inigant to the pump station, and we acquired the acreage right there at that pump station so that we can take off and go down to that, is that in any part of this environmental at all for, to do anything with that, that bypasses that and goes right up into Green?
Correct, that would have to be a separate, and I know after this environmental was started, a lot of those things materialized. The acquisition of that property. And I think with the acquisition of that property, you could initiate another project to start studying that part of it and start moving that, the needle on that one. Because it really, I think it really opened up an opportunity to get that connection. But, but the biggest stumbling block there is even with the right away now, that you have a clear path to get to Malonees. It was always the fight with the Bureau of Reclamation on that one. As far as, you know, they wanted to have some sort of, be able to charge access into that connection into Malonees there. And how that was going to be done was always a sticking point between the city.
Right.
But we're not, excuse me, we're not going from Greenhorn Creek to Malonees quite yet.
No, no, that's, that's part of the master plan, but that's not part of this environmental that's going to be released.
I don't even think I'll be able to ride a bike by the time we get to that part.
You like, you never, you never know.
Never say never.
This feels like this is, because we've been talking, I've been hearing about this since, you know, I don't know, 2012 it feels like, so yeah.
But I think when the environmental is complete, I think it's going to open up some things. Because now all of a sudden, I think we're going to be a lot more competitive for ATP funding. And, and that's where you could potentially get this whole entire, all three segments funded through that potentially, so.
So you mentioned that segments one and two are a Class 1 trail, which is 10 foot with a barrier?
Mm-hmm. There'll be a barrier between the traffic along.
Along the roadway.
Right, along the roadway. And that's, that's what makes it a Class 1 is you have separation, clear separation, whether that's a barrier or I forgot the distance, between travelway and the trail itself.
Yeah. What's that barrier made of? Is it like hay rail?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a traffic rated barrier, that's correct.
And can we sacrifice in any places that, in order to get closer to the, to the creek and away from the, the traffic, can we sacrifice 10 foot width and go narrower? Or do we, are we, do we have to stay at that, that width? If it, if it would deem itself necessary?
So in these areas, all through here, we pretty much follow the creek very closely, right? So we're not necessarily talking about from Tryon to this area. It's really focused on that area from Kirk Drive to Booster. And in this case, I mean, this doesn't have the barrier on, because this is just trail, it has the separation, so.
It doesn't have a barrier there.
Yeah, this one has a barrier. You don't need the traffic rated barrier when you get to, next to Bellisito, so starting down somewhere in this area here, you would start the, the barrier.
Not the roadway?
No. Questions? So it's just really update on, taking a feedback. But I mean, our plan is that in two weeks from now, we're going to release this to the public, so.
It'll be great to get there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. We need to open up some public comment.
Oh, sure.
And I don't know if anyone's going to ask any questions, really we don't need to address them. But if this is an opportunity for anybody from the public, if they'd like to get up and ask questions or speak. Ms. Amy Auguste.
Mayor and council members, this history of this trail goes back to when the general plan was written. And in fact, the Angels Creek Trail is in your general plan. But it is part of a much larger regional pit biking pedestrian plan. Hence that connection from Kirk Drive down into town. Kirk Drive is eventually supposed to be extended out towards St. Murphy's Gray Road, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not just people in Salty. It would be people regionally coming, pulling them in, as well as all ages. People do not like to take their strollers and their kids alongside of the road. They would rather be in the safety next to a creek. So just a little bit of background about that. But this is really part of connecting into, this is one segment, but it connects to a regional section.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? How about online, Rose? We have a few people online. Does anybody?
I don't see any comment, any.
Any groups?
Yeah.
Okay, so bringing it back, thank you very much, Matt, for the presentation. Much appreciated.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
When you get that, can you send it to me? Because we'll add it to your website for information as well. And then.
Absolutely. Thanks, everyone, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Moving along, we'll go to item 7B. That will approve the purchase of one truck from Chase Chevrolet for the Waterway Bar and Public Water Department. Michelle.
Yes, so lots of meetings made with purchased vehicles. And personally, he's in his budget from what he was going to protect. And he has an opportunity to have a vehicle ready for purchase and it still remains in budget. So we wouldn't have to amend anything was he'd like to move forward and replace that vehicle now. But waiting until next week or the weekend would be something available or prices go up, so.
And this is at Chase Chevrolet in Stockton, which like, right?
Yes.
Found it, good. Okay, does anybody have any questions about this? Comments?
So right, as soon as we purchase this, it's going to go on the schedule to when the next time we need to purchase the next one, correct?
Correct. And is this, will this justify that something in his fleet will get surplus to him? Just one?
Surplus. He'll be surplusing three.
Three.
Two, two from the prior.
Oh, that's fine.
And then I am working with staff. We don't have a big staff set system, so everything is on spreadsheets. But we're working with staff to get a current updated list of their vehicles and heavy equipment in terms of mileage and hours used. So we can put together our placement schedule. So we just have it included going forward. And that's also important for that five year look forward on our financial picture. Because right now it's, it's barely reactive.
Exactly. Great, that's wonderful. Okay. Any other comments? Members of the public, any comments on this? Who's on line?
Nope.
Okay, so bringing it back, we'll be looking for consideration of a motion for the approval of this vehicle.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One out of 5, oh, thank you for that. Item 7C. To adopt the resolution number 2341, authorizing the industrial disability retirement of Police Officer Stephen Sanford.
I actually wrote it, but Rebecca knows more about it, so I'll let Rebecca speak. Okay.
So in the cases where we have an employee who has an, it, it can be not just for an industrial, but it could be for industrial, i.e. workers comp, or it could just be for injury, not on, not at work. This particular injury was an industrial injury. And he has the normal 48th day workers comp. And so we're on just the long-term disability period at this point. So his injuries have been deemed that he will not be able to come back to work in the same capacity that he was in. And so we've worked with him in identifying that. And so the recommendation is to go ahead and file that Industrial Retirement Act application with helpers so he can move forward on, in essence, getting a early disability retirement through helpers.
So by doing this, will it open up the majority?
Yes. We have to wait until helpers go through their review process. So they have a process on that as well. But then once it's approved by helpers, then yes, we can take him off. And then we would be able to hire.
Do you know how long that process typically takes or what do they say?
Well, I think we call them on a daily basis. They, they say it could take, you know, two, three months.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, anybody here with us have any questions in the public? Any sound? Anybody online? Everybody online. Okay. Okay, so bringing it back, we're looking for a motion to pass resolution 2341.
I'll make a resolution, or I'll make a motion for resolution 2341.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes on a 5-0, Rose?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be going to item 7D, which is to approve resolution 2343 and amending the 2223 budget and granting approval to the city administrator to approve the proposals from Compel, am I saying that right? Compel?
Compel.
To replace the HBA system on our city properties.
I have to leave.
I think so.
Yeah. So I think we'll have. I didn't name who was renting the property.
But I think it's seven on the.
I think it's us. So we have, basically it's been experiencing ATRAC issues since last year. But the good news was like we mumbled through the summer and then we're like, well, it's winter time, so we're not going to worry about it. In the case of the police department, your heat still worked, correct? It was just the air conditioning that did not work.
Just shut it off.
And the case of the downtown property, I think neither worked. But it wasn't a huge, a huge issue. Now, and this is even months, I mean months to get.
To get the access.
To get green. It's kind of mind blowing, but anyway. So, so we kept having to call and talk to people to try to get quotes for this. And then ultimately, the weather has finally decided it kind of changed. And so we realized it's starting to get warm again. So we need to do something with PDS. I think at one point, your office, the building was like 86 degrees or it was some.
This was last summer?
Yeah. He made it through like the last little, little bit in October and then.
One of the units was, I think when the building was built, like from 1987 or something like that, and the other one's 20 years old. And we acquired the building, I think, so.
Yeah.
There's definitely years in the time that there are no even made parts for one of the units anymore.
Yeah. And then the, the one for the building downstairs, that's, it's just dead. So in that case, it's, it's starting to impact per compressor. So if we don't get that one replaced, if her compressor's going to break, isn't working, how do we find one on that one? So these are the quotes that we received. The recommendation is to go with Compel, which was $19,000 for two units for the police department and $9,500 for the downtown property. Total of $28,500. Don't ask me why the one quote was a whole $90,000.
I would say there's discrepancy.
Air circ.
Any air circ was right in there on the 1192.
Um, where's this going to come from in budget?
This is going to come from a balance.
Okay.
So, large.
Well, it happens, and so, you know.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
Um.
Nope.
Public? Do you need this?
Fans.
Fox fans?
He came into my office one day and it was hot. In his case was as red as those numbers on that clock.
Moving into City Hall.
It's all under evidence upstairs.
Yeah, so how hot is that?
Uh.
I mean, is that like?
The air conditioner's not running, it can get to like.
Right.
Yeah. It's like 100 degrees up there.
Yeah, inventory of that.
Yeah, that has to be, that's got evidence and all that kind of stuff in it. So it has to be air.
Damage, yeah.
Well, and we have computer equipment up there, which does not do well at the, so, yeah.
Nice. Okay, so bringing it back, if there's no further questions, we'll be looking for a motion. Well, I asked.
Oh, did you?
I mean, I said.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2343.
And I'm in a second. Um, so Alvin, Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This passes on a 401. Well, Phil Gretel knows, she didn't get that one, keep it back in.
Barker, we're going to make you sit in the heat.
We can't do two.
You can only do one.
Sorry, we don't have ladies. We're going to give you fans.
We're just doing PDS.
Could you just do one?
Yeah.
Taking us to item E. Update to council prohibitions on permit and contract approval.
So this is a fun one that came across my desk and that I want to move into the conference last week. It is absolutely true and everybody is having a passionate about it right now. So there is pressure through the League of Cities to have the dollar amount change because $250 is very low. But basically, if I say it short way, if you're campaigning and you take a donation for your little campaign of $250 or more, and a year later, that individual or company who donated that $250 to your campaign has a permit that you need to vote on, has a project that you need to vote on, has a contract that you're going to vote on, you can vote on it. You have to abstain, you have to remove yourself. So this becomes a pretty big issue if you are actually taking campaign donations because that means just about every single person that comes in here would potentially be an issue. So that we would have to have disclosures on our contracts, that they are disclosing, that they in fact did not, or they did donate to any one of you. You would have to also make sure that that's disclosed when we're talking about something. Whether it's an appeal, a permit, like anything that you would make a vote on, you would have to remove yourself from it. So like I said, $250 is somewhat ridiculous. So a lot of council members are thinking they just, if they don't change the dollar amount, they're not going to accept a donation of less than $245 or something like that. Or I think maybe for bigger cities and stuff, but I mean, I don't. Did we even do donations?
I didn't.
I didn't spend any money. And it really just depends. I mean, you, you have a rental and let's say, you know, two seats open up and it becomes a really heated, you know, one that when people are out there trying to fundraise to campaign, but signs all over the place, run ads, they're probably going to get donations to do that, so.
So it only is that there's money. It's not like, I'm just speaking hypothetically. Say Caroline has somebody who's her campaign manager. She doesn't necessarily donate money, but donates time and energy. What's the perception of that?
Specifically.
Okay.
The dollar amount. And it's, yeah, it's, it's complicated in bigger cities, for sure. For us, not so much. I mean, when I ran in 2018, I did have some contributions given to me, but they were under the $250 mark, so that was great. One of the things that cities are looking at is having the Chamber of Commerce have all the donations go there and then it gets doled out. Like they'll pay for your signs and then they'll pay for your, so it's like a, it's like a pack. Yeah, they create a pack.
Okay.
And so something like that, you know, if it gets to that point. But, you know, our campaigns in our town, it's just on a smaller level. So when you're looking at cities like Lowdi, when they're raising like $30,000 to run the city council, it's impactful, so.
I just feel like sometimes our campaigns might just be more about who's endorsing who or who's, who's allowing.
Or who's putting a sign.
Sign in their yard and then they come in a year or two later. But if it's only money, it's just money.
I've always liked tickets and stuff too.
No, you have to.
Like you.
You have to do that anyway.
Is that, you can see, that's another, okay.
That's, that's under form and you have to disposs it anyway.
That's what that one is, okay.
But if we.
What do you mean by tickets?
If someone gives you tickets to something, you need.
Yeah.
Because you're, because you're a city council member and they give you tickets or in kinds of, or.
In time, that's where, yes, that's where.
They buy dinner.
Right.
But, you know, another kind of like odd one is so like, let's say someone, you know, donated $250 to you and then they have, it's even if they, if you own property and you have a financial interest.
Right.
Um, within a thousand feet of Herple's land use, who speaks in hearing after they donated $250. Like it's a really.
That one they learned about.
Bizarre. Overreaching, but.
500 meters.
Yeah. So, so just think about that, if you campaigned.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, maybe.
Your thing is not a campaign.
Definitely.
I say we all just send no money and you just go out there.
Yeah.
Pound pavement yourself.
Um, and it was originally going to apply retroactively and they did clarify it and it will not. It's only those that are maybe 2023, January first going forward.
Okay, anybody have any further questions on that or clarification? Any members of the public have anything to add to our item? Seeing none, thank you for that. We'll be moving on to item eight already, which is administration report.
Um, okay, so a couple of things. Um, the State Water Resources Board is going to come. They were supposed to come yesterday, but I did not see them. So I'll follow up with Chris Oakland and see if we can follow up with them. But they were supposed to come and actually do water testing in the creek. So there's that. Dana, Kim and Matt with staff to look at some of our damaged facilities. And then they will be coming out again to look at some other damaged facilities. And this would be for the damage related to first winter storm. So winter storm December 2022 through, I think, January 31st or 25th, or whatever it was. And then we have a, a meeting later this week. And Pam Michelle will go to a.
Public.
Yeah. For the Public Assistance Meeting for the second winter storm federal declaration. So that way she can experience all the fun that I had at the first meeting that we went to. But it'll be the same thing. Thus far, there still is no individual assistance under, for Alderney County, under the, the second winter storm, only for the first winter storm. Also, in case anyone didn't know this, if you still haven't filed your taxes, you're free and clear, you don't actually have to file them until.
Oh, that's great.
We are in a declared, a federally declared county, so. Yay. What else? So we've gotten a lot of banter online about the trees getting cut in the park, which is why I started talking about this months ago. But unless people listen to our council meetings or read the newspaper or look at Facebook, looking at the other ways that we've tried to drop that, they apparently didn't know. So I've just been responding with the, yes, the arborist was hired. The arborist went and identified the dead or dying trees. Any trees that have been cut down were dead or were dying.
Or were they also in?
We haven't looked at site development.
Oh, site, it's not even in there.
No.
So site didn't even come into play?
No.
Wow.
This is dead or dying.
Wow.
Um, if any of you looked at the park after the winter storm, it looked like.
Yeah, it did. It looked terrible.
Um, that was because we have extremely unhealthy trees and they couldn't withstand any of the wind or any of the weather that was going on. So staff have regularly gone down there to get gigantic limbs that just fall out of those trees. So the fact that nobody has been hit by one is just pure luck. So, you know, it's, 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 it really is shocking how many trees came down. It's really sad because those were beautiful trees. We all grew up with those trees.
Yeah, it's shocking. It is. They had come down. Yeah.
We've not done that lately.
Right.
So also the arborist is not the same person that took the trees down. We hired, again, this was all through council. Um, so we are working with the Conservation Corps, which is a nonprofit organization to remove those trees. They are the ones doing that. So there's a lot of conflict between who marked those trees and what trees are coming down. It didn't have to do with site, it had to do with safety and it had to do with howlers. So definitely part of the design and redoing that park is going to involve landscaping and trees. And it will take another 50 years to get some of those trees that are going to be planted to look like the ones that got cut down. In the meantime, we are trying to identify wood from those trees, whether it's the walnut, there were the redwood that came down in the park a couple of years ago that we saved off. And we would like to build benches with those. So we'll put those benches in the park just as a way to kind of remember and follow through those trees. The museum have also shown interest in utilizing the wood to do something just to kind of commemorate those trees because they were important to our residents and to that park, but.
Does the contractor who fell the tree from the wood, or do we show?
We have it.
Okay.
It's ours. So.
And has it, has the, has people been coming in and has the phone been ringing? Or is this all online banter?
It's online banter. I've gotten phone calls. I've gotten emails.
And then people say things to me.
Yeah.
But it was kind of all of the above.
But it didn't, it wasn't done lightly, which is why we tried to forward thinking, tried to talk about it, just to kind of get people realizing that it was happening. But we are going to be printing a sign from the work, so there will be a nice giant big sign that says that the work is happening. Um, I think, I think part of the concern is nothing was happening for so long and then all of a sudden, it's happening. And so what I want to assure our council and the public, when you look back from December is when we approved the, when we started approving contracts. The, when we started approving contracts through this month, between the grants. The construction, the demo, all of the contracts, there's I think been a total of five or six that have been approved. For our government, that is like rough speech. We don't do anything fast, but that was done very, very quickly. Because it all needed to happen in the right order. And so all of that progress is gonna happen really, really quick. So my hope is that everyone can get past the trees and they'll start seeing. Kind of positive progress that's gonna be happening over the next um, several months. And also our um, priority again is still just trying to get that figure drawn as quickly as possible. Um, so that's that. And then lastly, um, and John is here. We have been approached or uh, the fire department's been approached by the Volunteer Training Association voters.
County Fire Academy.
County, I was close. County Fire Academy?
You're so close.
I was just close. Uh, so there is a, uh, there is a house. It's the yellow house that is between the Alta Bell Liquor and where the building is. Where the parasolons and cycle and the river shore arm. They would like to use that house as a uh, training house, uh, which would include burning it. Uh, down. I, my two cents on it is, it's, it's as. It's as high profile as you can get. It's right across from my school. It's right next to business. It's right in the middle of businesses. Um, uh, John doesn't have a plan for it yet. They haven't submitted a plan yet. Um, but if council is, is agreeable to do it, then he will move forward in asking them to put a plan together. There isn't water available for them to use cause someone uh, broke the hydrant. They ran it to a little bit. So we have to replace the hydrant. Um, I don't know if an encouragement would be required on forty nine. Um, I don't know the circumstances for what training would be done. Um, what type of, of her um, city staff would have to be involved in that, that will all come from the plan. But it's ultimately, I'm looking for you to uh, see if you have the appetite. Because certainly we'll be getting calls on that as well.
Well, there would have to be extensive traffic control. I can't even imagine the traffic control that would have to be involved. And that would all go through this academy?
Can we ask you some questions?
Yeah, can, do you wanna talk about it, John?
Sure, yeah.
Tell us more. I remember when we burned the house on the other side behind the post office.
I'd check one too. Um, it's common for the academy and the, the county train officer to always look for a structure to burn during a fire academy. The family was willing to donate that. They have plans to, they'd like that building gone. It's been problems with PD as well. And so they wanna get rid of that and their plans are to do some sort of commercial building in the future. So that came to the uh, Fire Academy that I just got pressed on this last Wednesday. So it's been, it's been out there for a while. Uh, came to me and I, I had a discussion with the city administrator about it. Uh, the way that it would work from our standpoint is this is just the first step in the process. You know, the city administrator and the city council have to buy off on this is the possibility of a project or it's okay to move forward. As your fire chief, it's not gonna move forward unless everything's completely safe and we would mitigate, attempt to mitigate any potential safety issues. Uh, as far as the roadways go, yeah, there could be a situation there. There might be a, where we can have all the trucks off the streets. It doesn't bother, right? My idea, and they haven't proposed a plan yet, and I'll tell you how that works, would be, you know, we would do this at night on a Sunday night where there's no traffic. Uh, where the businesses are closed. Uh, the owner of that place owns the other, some of the other businesses around there as well in the, in the homes. But the process is if you give the go ahead that this is something you're willing to do. What would happen next is the next thing that would go to is for environmental review. With air pollution control, environment health, who would have to come evaluate the house to decide if the structure can be burned. Or if there's toxic material in it, or there's asbestos in it or whatever, they have to give the go ahead for that. If they give the go ahead for that, then the next step is that we request an incident action plan from the county, the Fire Academy and the train officer. On what their plan is. And then Nate and I would look at that plan, review that plan and alter that plan or we need this or we need that or we need this or we need that. To make it work. And then at, at that point, if we signed off on that, then, then, then it would probably be a go. I know, i- it is close to three other structures around there that are, is a concern to me. I haven't been out there fully. I haven't spent any time on it yet because we need to go ahead here and I need environmental health and air pollution control. To decide if it can either be done. If they can, then I'll put a little mark for it. They write the incident action plan, we review that and we'd go from there. Um, and there is some, there's some stumbling blocks as far as water and stuff. That could probably be accommodated. We would have, we would give them. This is what you have to do if there's not a hydrant right there. They'd have to have safety engines in addition to the academy training. To protect our structures that have to be built into the plan to make sure nothing else will catch on fire. So that's just sort of it. I, as the fire chief and, and, and the fire marshal, we're not gonna approve any plan that puts something at risk where there could be a, a problem. So we're gonna make sure that it's really safe if it was decided to move forward. The way these, these plans normally work, it isn't like we light the house on fire and it puts up hundred foot flames and burns down. They start small fires and then allow the firefighters to go in and see what it's like to be in heat. To see what it's like to have smoke come down really low and not be able to see. And they do that three or four times. They do that in every room and then gradually then we, we burn it. It's burn-in sections. It isn't just one big burn on. And it would take, you know, it would take a while to do it. So there's a lot of planning. This is just the very first step in the process. And even after Nate and I got there fully evaluated, there could be still a no-go. Um, so that's just it.
Who wasn't involved in the training? Is it just available?
It would be, no, this is for all fired, fire agencies within our county.
Okay.
Have participants that are in it. We don't this time. Sometimes we have had participants in, in the, in the county academy. And then uh, it would also go out to all the fire, like the full-time staff. That if their departments wanna participate to have people down here, I would anticipate that even for us, I would have a training component for our guys. You know, to put the ladder truck up and that would help protect structures potentially and stuff like that. I would offer to Alta Babylonians as well and we would, and Nate and I would work together through that, decide how we wanted to do that. So we're just at, it's at the very first step. It sounds like this has been going on for a while. Unfortunately, this is the son of the owner. And it's been going on for a while. It's unfortunate that I wasn't involved in this a long time ago. Because there's certain things that I would take care of a long time ago. In addition to, you know. A lot of times we burn these buildings and the house doesn't come down. The house, we, we might be there for eight hours. We did a whole bunch of training. And the structure, sidewalls are still up, the rots, like now you have from a cleanup portion or demo, if you will. You have, it might be tougher on cleanup crew or something like that to pick up all this burnt stuff. And that would be something that I'd wanna work with the owner on too, to be sure that that happens in a timely manner. We don't wanna, something right across the street. Through the high schools. So that would be an agreement where we'd work with the owners to say, hey, you have a certain amount of time period. I'd work with the city administrator on that to make sure that, hey, we have an agreement. This is how it's gonna happen. We're, you know, if we're doing this. We're not gonna have something sitting there like over on Gardner for months and months and months and months or, or on Bush, whatever, you know, we, we all know the places. So again, it's very early in the process. This is just the first step to say, hey, is this something we wanna move forward with? And then there's a lot of steps, a lot of clogs in the wheel going down that would, could, could potentially stop it. So that's sort of what we're at at the end. And other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yeah, I have a question. Who picked the bill up on this? It sounds like it's gonna be kind of a costly.
Well, it would be, so all the costs for anything dealing with the prep of the building. Cause the, they could come in and say, oh, you need to take this off. There can't be light fixtures in here. That can't burn. That's toxic. All that would be done by the County Fire Academy and the training officers from the county would be at no cost to us for that. The cleanup would have to be on the homeowner. Um, you know, we've done these before at Angels PD. You guys have seen this. We've built props over there, burned down. And the academy cleans it up in a couple of days. You know, they have their guys come back out there, but that's a different thing cause it's on a, a, a city. Property and that was the agreement. Hey, we'll allow you to do this, but you have to clean it up. So that's it. There could be some cost for us for like, you know, I'm sure that I would wanna put an extra crew on that night. To make sure, you know, because I might want, I definitely want city staff there, watching it, observing it as well. And then I'd wanna probably another crew to handle the calls within the city, cause I wouldn't wanna leave that unattended. I know I would be there or Nate would be there or we both might be there too. Um, so mostly the cost is absorbed by the, that academy.
So I mean, it sounds like a really, for, for me, it sounds like a good training exercise for not just city angles, but county wide.
Yeah, this is, it's a county-wide training program for all the new firefighters that are coming into the fire departments for all the different agencies. So they go to a six-month academy. They're doing stuff every week, doing stuff. And then at the end of the, towards the end of their academy, they have a live fire training. And, and that is pretty rare to have that opportunity, even us as full-time firefighters. When we go to live fire training, a lot of times now it's all in a controlled environment. We use some propane and, you know, it's done by temperature when it gets certain thing that goes down. So it is unique. It doesn't happen all the time. There's times when they don't get a chance to do the live fire burn, just because there's nothing available. So I'm neutral on it. I'm not pushing one way or the other. I'm always for training. But I have to see all the information and make a, a logical, educated form decision.
Um, my question is that, so you're looking for just a go, no-go, um, look into this. Do we have another o- opportunity to say, uh, once you've gathered all that information, like actually the city doesn't wanna have that kind of liability? Next to businesses or?
Well, yeah, I, absolutely. But what I would think that I would do, this, this is me personally, I would make a decision. And, and, and I would make a decision on, you know, and there is liability. I mean, something bad could happen.
Right.
We've all heard about stories. But I would make a decision tonight and then trust your fire chief and your fire marshal to make sure that everything is.
Right. So, so it's basically. I could have just, which my decision would have been. Um, I, I, I don't disagree that it's a great training opportunity. Um, my concern is it's right in the middle of downtown. It's, it's, they, it's right next to businesses. So it, there, there is a risk. There absolutely is. Um, and you know, just the smallest thing causes our community and our residents to just start blowing up. Everyone's homes.
And Nate mentioned it's Sunday, but what time of year are you talking? The heat house?
Center?
So we tried to do it between, they, originally this is what floored me when it came to me. They had this on the schedule for May the sixth. And I'm like, what? I, you probably can't even get an air pollution control permit or whatever, environmental review. So, so my, my thing, yeah, the third week of May.
Yeah.
I get it.
We got, go on.
So the date in, in my mind right now is. It's not a date. It's not a date at all, you know.
Do we get to?
It's like.
Do we get a say of the dates?
Sure. I mean, you could. I mean, we could, we could do that. And they could come back even after the academy, after it's out. Let's say they graduated. They could still come back and do that. But I, you know, I don't know what the timeline would be to get everything together, even, even right now. It could take some time. Um, so.
Really the question is, do you even have, do you have an appetite to do this soon or? Can I ask a homeowner's son a question? If we don't burn it, are you gonna have demo this building or is it just gonna sit there for years?
Um, uh, to my knowledge, the process for demoing it is just a lot more permits. And this was, this was just another route that we wanted to go, cause we thought very beneficial building. Has been, and been in our side for some time. It's basically inhabitable. Um, and you know, we're working with the PD a lot. There's, we have a lot of homeless living in it. And it's just turned into an absolute dump and it's kind of an eyesore at this point. And we kind of don't know what to do at this point. Um, and this was an option that came to us and we really wanted to pursue it. We think it's an awesome opportunity for these guys. Like you said, it's a pretty unique uh, experience for young firefighters to do. And otherwise, you're gonna be dealing with a rotten building right in downtown for a while. And as, like he already, John already pointed out, we would like to develop that area further. Probably make it look a lot better and future opportunity for growth. And if this doesn't pass, not gonna happen.
And another option, so I brought this up. Again, this was brought in late. So I talked to a couple of the train officers today that had contacted me and I said, another option is you can still demo. You, there's a lot of work that we can do without starting a fire. They can practice cutting holes in the roof without burning anything, you know. We can do holes in the wall. There's all kinds of things that can be done where they could pretty much destroy the building without burning it. So, you know, I will bring that to them as an option. If, you know, it was kind enough for them to wanna donate it to the fire department to, to help out. I, I appreciate that. But if it doesn't, if, if we don't wanna light on fire, then that's another option that we can do, you know.
I'd also look into it and see what you can find with. I mean, I, I didn't even think about that option.
Yeah.
So, I mean, see what you can find out and, and.
Okay.
Can I, can I just add something to that? Um, just something to consider. If that thing's gonna sit there, it's inhabitable. Or there's homeless people breaking in and camping inside of it. The chance that an accidental fire gets started in there goes through the roof as well. Um, I'm not saying anything either way, but when they were talking, that's something that came to my mind. Was it a potential? And then now you don't have the control that you would have with a control burn with fire personnel there and all that kinda stuff. So I'm just.
You guys are out there a lot dealing with all sorts of?
I wouldn't say a lot. We've been out there.
Yeah.
Dealing with issues.
I'm, I'm all for looking into it.
Yeah, it still does require a demo here in the city.
Yeah, yeah. And then once it's burned out, like it's not gonna just be allowed to sit there like that for.
Well, I think we'd have a driven window.
We'll make sure that it's cleaned up very fast, out of the way, contained within days.
I mean, like, okay, so let's say you have an entire neighborhood in the back at Big Horn and they're gonna have. I mean, is this gonna be a big huge smoke bump that these people are gonna be complaining and now they have?
At some point, there could be smoke. I, I don't, I don't, I have no idea what the weather conditions could be that day and how it's going. But normally the way these burns are done is it's done in, we don't want things to get out of control. It's what I'm trying to teach. So commonly, you'll have professional firefighters there. Something starts to go a little weird, they intervene, put the fire out, start over. Okay, now we're doing a whole nother sequence and then you just start over. Normally it's done in, in sections. So we burn one room and then, and then it's not gonna put up a lot of smoke, cause it's probably gonna get trapped inside there, whatever, and then another room. Then it'll go back and forth and then make, then they might do an attic fire. Then we light that up and we let it burn for a little bit, then we put it out. Then, because we don't want, if we just burn it all in ten minutes, nobody gets the opportunity to have the training.
Yeah.
The last one was done in two thousand nineteen, was it, huh? In Copper?
The last house was done in Copper. And I can just tell you on that, so there was two houses that were set for Copper to go. One house, the, the year that we tried, they tried to do it, it got denied by air pollution control because they came in and said, there's too much toxic stuff in here. You're not gonna burn. So, and so commonly, you know, we've done one at Barbie Ranch. We've had a real big fire at Barbie Ranch that we did. But normally, uh, over the past years, it's been where they've spent the money to buy materials and build like a false building. And then, and burn it that way. Normally, what they're really trying to do is ensure firefighting, to teach them what it's like to go in when there's smoke. Down this low and to go in and try to find that fire inside that structure.
This might be a stupid question. Is it ever an option to lift it, trailer it somewhere out?
That would be.
Burn it somewhere else so that it's not in town?
That's a, it's expensive cost. I mean, since we, remember we guys were looking at moving a house one time. And that cost was, you know, was not really a good cost. So I, yeah, that'd be something that we wouldn't do. And I don't think the fire academy would have the money to even help the homeowner out to move it somewhere to burn it.
All I wanna say is I think a training opportunity like this is great. I trust your judgment. I trust his judgment. Um, I obviously think you guys are in a controlled situation and the further that you look into this, you'll figure out if you can do it or not. So I think we could spend all day and night going back and forth on the whys and the hows and the whats, but until they start to pursue it, they're not gonna. Like they could get, you just said.
Right, absolutely.
So for me, I'd say go for it.
And I just want you all to know that if, if, if it goes that direction. You are all, it's not coming back.
Yeah, I, I wanna make sure it's not anytime in May or, or graduation across the street from the height. I mean, it can't be. July, it might be July fourth.
Graduation's on a Friday. You can do it that Sunday. I also, you know, public average.
That's my only concern, the type of, or the, the, you know, the.
I just think there might be a lot of liability, but it's.
I just think there might be a lot of liability, but just stay and figure all that out. Research it.
I was like, research too, right?
Right. Oh, absolutely. Yes.
But if the city council agrees to it, then.
It'll be the last one call you get from me if something goes bad. I'm out of here. Hey, sorry, the liquor store's running. Got to go. Call Nate. Call Nate with me.
We're going to move on to council, read down Rebecca with you.
Yeah. So council reports. Gretel, you have anything?
Um, yeah, I did. I went to the beach, but I left it off because I was running. So basically that was, um, the.
The hazards.
All hazards meeting? Yeah, the width of the driveways and the length of the driveways have to have certain turnouts every twenty feet, forty feet. And, um, for clearance. And there were some other things and I had a whole page of notes, but I'm sorry.
I, I think what it comes down to is we have very conflicting language in our code in terms of what our standards are. And so part of it is that we would like to have one standard for the historic area, one standard for the nonhistoric area, but it needs to comply with a standard that's the same regardless of what section you look at. Uh, because right now it's very all of a place. So.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca. Oh, they're working on that.
They're, yes, they're working. Okay.
Got it?
Yeah.
Karen.
Uh, I went to the League of Cities Summit in Sacramento last week. Uh, and attended some really great sessions. One was, um, a lot of, the focus of the whole summit was really on homelessness and housing issues. Um, which is, you know, it's affecting every city in California and probably every city across the nation. Um, but there was some really great stuff that was discussed. Um, one of them was just collaborating between your uh, law enforcement superintendent of schools and the council on school safety, which I thought was fantastic. Um, that was a great session. And the other one, which we don't really deal with, is the smash and grab, uh, organized crime and working with the highway patrol locally below up here. So we haven't had that stuff, but, um, Rebecca and I met with, um, our, uh, uh, assemblyman Patterson's, um, chief of staff, because he was sick. And so, um, it was just her and I and Stephen Qualls and that was it. But we went in there to kind of lobby for some items and, um, talked to him about, uh, the one thing that really came through was a three billion dollar annually to help cities increase housing supply and prevent homelessness. So that was the big thing that we went in to have them support. And there were some other things to oppose and other things to support, but they got a packet that looks like this that we dropped off with all of the League of Cities things that, research that they did. So it was great. And, um, met a lot of other council members from across the state and it was good. Yeah. And I missed the museum meeting, but they did a three-hour strategic planning meeting, um, while I was gone. And we are, uh, getting closer to the MOU between the city and the foundation on whose jobs what and whose in, who's supposed to be in charge of what.
Yeah. Uh, I dropped in line, uh, basically stole it from another agency and made a couple of changes to a known point in reamending the will. And, uh, sent it for review. So we're kind of working through that, you know, pieces of that. Um, but, yeah. And I guess if it makes anyone feel any better, um, every city in California is having the exact same problem, uh, the homeless.
Yeah.
Um, where there's no solution, yeah, there's no funding and nobody knows what to do.
Nobody knows what to do. Everybody kept asking the question and nobody knows what to do. So finish up.
So it makes us feel any better.
Well, we.
I will say quickly that I.
I'm a percent of the homeless people in California.
I will say quickly that I, uh, attended UWPA. We had a special meeting last week on the twelve. Um, and that was for performance evaluation that, uh, go master prior to that. And that's all I've done in the last week. Isabel, you're up.
I don't have anything to report. We need to go to Reno, which is on Saturday, eleven.
I went to COG and the main thing about COG was the, uh, I have a new gentleman named Bruce. He is an alternate. Um, he took a lady's spot from Murphy's and he's from Murphy's. So it was the same district. So we're going to go with him. Um, and then, you know, like a year and a half. Yeah. Um, um, and then Calabres Connect, uh, we got a bus. We got all new electric vehicles that we got the all new rap and it's pretty, it's all standard and standard. It's huge. So it's pretty nice. Um, they're going to have it at the fair. They have a little booth. Um, so only took two and a half, three, I don't know, three, whatever.
Thirty years.
Thirty, thirty years plus a day. And then there was also the zero emissions bus rollout. Thing we approved to have emissions. Um, so following up.
Okay. Um, correspondence, we do have three letters for correspondence. If anybody.
Are you going to place me? Uh, sorry, I didn't skip calendar.
Tell us about Phil Duran.
Uh, April ninth. So tomorrow the IRW MAU and Chris, uh, Chris will probably be traveling to go get that vehicle tomorrow. So, and CPPA, which Gretel got the notice, um.
It's in person.
Yes. Solidways Hatch Force Meeting on Monday in Green.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, UWPA on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
Yep.
Jen is speaking at, um, in Murphy's, right? At Labco.
Yeah, Kyle Labco on, on.
Seventh?
That'd have been. Correct.
Correct. And then we're into May. So COG on the third, um, Rebecca will be gone on vacation.
I think COG has been canceled.
Canceled.
Okay, perfect.
A lot of stuff.
So Rebecca's gone on vacation that week, the first through the fifth.
So Michelle will be.
Out of the shell.
We do have a fair kickoff. I think we've all been invited.
On the third.
That's on May third, six o'clock out at the fairgrounds. And I think this RSCP date, I don't recall what it is off the top of my brain, but versus RSCP.
So also then on the fourth, the water school, uh, that iron stone at six o'clock.
Yeah.
And then the second week is planning meeting. Planning is due against the open house for the rezoning from four to six, just before their, um, original meeting.
Nice. And so if you get any questions on that rezoning.
Yeah.
Um, all it is, is when the general plan was through, there were several, uh, parcels that don't have the zoning that's in the general plan.
They were supposed to have.
That they should have. So normally what would happen is we would just let it be. And then when they come forward and they want to build or they want to develop, they would have to go through a rezoning process and they would have to pay for that. We received a grant, uh, to just do a wide swath of all those rezonings all at one time. So in essence, we're saving those property owners the cost of having to rezone to match the general plan.
Right.
But if they choose not to rezone, then they will be out of sync with the general plan. And should they want to come forward five, 10 years from now and want to develop, they would have to go through a reserving process in order to do that.
There was already one meeting, right?
Yeah, several, cut it back down.
Several.
She had some people attend.
And they're not with the one at. Country Lane?
No, just before the planning commission meeting on the thirteenth.
Uh huh. When did you get this credit? Seventeen years?
Was it SP one?
Uh.
Yeah, that's it. And they're not. Yes. No, they were updating ordinances so that the ordinance.
There was some zoning.
Then matched, right, but the ordinance zoning matched the general plan. These are physical parcels that do not have the same zoning.
Like notifying them and updating the parcel.
Like we found out when we went to a meeting that, um, that newest development over in Greenhorn is all, uh, zoned commercial.
Yes.
Yes.
Which is clearly resonant.
It's great.
Clearly residential. So you, you don't want a real estate agency opening right next to you.
Right.
Our new home.
Yeah.
By last.
Yeah.
So we already talked about correspondence, or I mentioned it. If anybody has any comments, future agenda items, info? Nobody? Okay, so. For, and.
The lovers are lighting down now at some point.
Alvin?
I'm working on it.
Isabel, you have a second? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Bye.